Hey, everyone. This is the Delaware County Commissioner Meeting. It's Monday, December 7th, 2020. Time is 9:05 a.m. Steve, could you call the roll for the log, please?
Ms. Reagan.
President.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Brock.
Here.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, November 16th, 2020.
I move.
Second.
A motion to approve the minutes in a second. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, presentations to the commissioners, the Community Foundation of Muncie Delaware County. Is anyone here for that?
So I told Ms. Julie Mason that I would present this certificate. I'm gonna kind of put it on my screen here. So she brought this in for you guys, basically just thanking the commissioners for your assistance. While she really pushed this year hard to get the word out about the census.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes. Jen, you might drop the, Ms. Julie, a note of thanks, because she worked very hard on this for the whole community.
She did, and she is a lovely woman. I really enjoy her, but yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Veterans Affairs. Devin?
Yes, just giving an update on the project holiday, home improvement project we've got going on. We are now in the final phases of it. We are currently on drywall and painting. We are still on track for the 15th, potentially 18th, due to some scheduling conflicts with some of the contractors. But we, we are pretty much on track to guarantee that he will be in that home before December 25th.
That's amazing. You guys are doing a great job on that. We greatly appreciate, greatly appreciate that. That's really, that's something for you guys to undertake, and it's been a huge job, and we appreciate you guys.
We appreciate everybody's support, and we'll hopefully be able to update everyone on any sort of ceremonies or anything like that. Obviously, we want to try to be as safe as possible, but any new information, you guys will be the first to know.
It's been a huge job, and we appreciate it.
Thanks, standing guys.
And we'll hopefully be able to update everyone.
Okay, one of contracts or agreements for approval, emergency declaration, John?
Yes, this is the continuation of the emergency declaration for the commissioners. This is based upon the Governor's Order, Executive Order 20-49, which extended health emergency to the end of the year. It is a continuation of what is in the Governor's Order 20-48. It still requires face mask in public buildings, social distancing, all of those same things as before. This continues until your next meeting of December 21st.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions?
No. I move we adopt emergency that, like, 2020-20.
Tag it.
Motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, next is Emily Anderson.
Morning, Commissioners. I have two contracts I need approval. The first is Thomas Reuters, Thompson Reuters, which is the contract last week for books for the judges. This guarantees 5% increase rather than 7.5 or even higher every year, so it's a three-year contract, and I just need approval of that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve the contract with Reuters in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you. The next one is an agreement for the Indiana Child Support Bureau Cooperative Agreement. This was signed last year. This is just amending the change in the date. This is with agreement with the state and the feds to ensure that we are reporting correctly to get that reimbursement money back to the county, which is that 66.6%. So anything that's been on our budget, we get reimbursed, so we just need this signed. Judge Dowling will also sign this when you sign it, after you sign it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the Indiana Child Support Bureau contract in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Next, we have asphalt materials. Mr. Jesse?
Yes, what we have is a continuation to the contract from 2019, and we actually continued it from 18 into 19, because we don't really have anybody else that bids on that, and they're willing to leave the price where it is right now. So we just need to decide if you want to try and bid it and get somebody else to bid, or just continue with where we're at. I think we're pretty fortunate that they're locking that price in from 2020.
Robert, what, what is the price that we're talking about here?
You know, I'm not sure right off the top of my head, as far as the emulsion that we use for chip and seal. I'd have to look that price up. Is it not on that paper?
No, sorry.
I, I can look it up, but it's, it's not changed from the last two years.
And is this the company that does the, between the joints?
They, they are. They done the Wheeling Avenue.
Yeah. Yes, I was out there, and I saw, I was able to see it go down, and I was real impressed with it.
Yeah, the joint sealer. I think that's the first time we've ever used it, and I believe it's probably a good product. The state's doing it, so we thought we'd, we'd try that on that project.
I wish you could do those on every projects, because it just, it's a 10-year savings, that's for sure. I move we keep it with asphalt materials.
I'll second it.
A motion to approve in a second. I think we're, let's start vantage since they're keeping the prices, the prices, so. Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
Thank you.
All right, next is Motorola Solutions Agreement. Paul Singleton?
Morning, Commissioners. This is a yearly renewal of the Motorola Agreement. I've got funds to pay for it. I just need that contract approved, so I can get it back to them and get them to invoice me, so I can have a claim made.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the Motorola Agreement in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
And Jimmy, if, once, once you get that signed, could you email that to me as quickly as possible?
Yep, me or Denise will.
Okay, thank you.
I want to make the public aware, any comments can be made at commissioners@co.delaware.in.us. That's email address, commissioners@co.delaware.in.us. Forgot to mention that. Okay, we'll go on to Tyler Technologies. Jim Fluke?
Good morning. This agreement is with Tyler Technologies, which is our New World Public Safety software. This is for their upgrade to the enterprise solution that they are now on. The biggest portion of this upgrade will be involved with the CAD dispatching side. There also will be upgrades to the LERMs, the mobile, and the IDAX interface that they have with us. But the biggest change will affect the CAD dispatch side of it. So this agreement is for a five-year payment plan, which allows us to start the project and over the next five years pay $23,503 a year. That money was approved and put in my budget by the council this year.
Okay, what's the, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And John or Joe, you guys have looked at the agreement?
I did look at the agreement, and it seems appropriate for the, what the, what the county is receiving.
Okay. A motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, next we have the addendum to Dossit Consulting. John or Joe, have you looked at it?
I have. It's similar to what the county's already approved in the past, just, just an addendum.
Okay. Rick, I've talked to Rick about that this weekend. He's okay with all of that, of course, and has money for it. So what's the pleasure of the commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, next we have an easement agreement, and I'm guessing Marta is gonna talk about this.
Actually, this is probably gonna be me.
Okay, go ahead.
This easement agreement is for the industrial trail project that's currently under construction now on the south side of Muncie. Commissioners acquired some property north of where the new justice center is, so this easement will allow that trail to stay in place for now until forever, basically. So the trail that you met actually runs from the current Justice Center, well, sorry, the new Justice Center property, all the way north to Cornbread, and that's it. It's just the county giving an easement to the county.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for the easement agreement in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thanks, Joe. Okay, next we have Amendment to Data Processing Service Agreement.
So I don't know if Jim wants to talk about this at all, but this is just an amendment to an agreement you already have with Computer Management and Consultants Incorporated for your IT services. This agreement changes the terms of the, sorry, this amendment changes the terms of the current agreement to basically lock in the term for another two years, whereas the current agreement automatically extends each year. So you'd basically be giving up your opportunity to terminate the agreement after 2021, and instead you'll have that opportunity at the end of 2022. The other thing it changes, the price that the county will pay. The current agreement has a price of, let's say, like, two, it ends up being, I think, like, $450,000 or so per year, and the amendment will change that to about $400,000 per year, so you'll actually be saving about $50,000 per year with the amendment. So Jim wants to weigh in on that with anything else that may be going with it. I think that's really the gist of it.
Well, the, yeah, the agreement, according to what I had for this year and going into next year, was actually a $2,000 increase over the two contracts, one for the county IT and one for the, so I'm not sure where you're seeing the $50,000. I didn't.
I'm just going based on the number that I have from the agreement that we had done way back when, so the agreement may have been changed before it was actually approved, but I don't have the final approved version, so that very well may be the case.
That's definitely, yeah, the final is when I sent you. Okay, I guess I would like to review that before we approve that and sign it, because that's.
Well, yeah, I can tell you, so the amendment changes the price to, I guess, whatever it was before, to now, for 2021, the price will be $190,000 plus $220,000 for the two services, for a total of, what's that, $410,000 for the year?
Right.
So I'm not sure what the current number is, I guess, based on what you're saying. But the number that would, it would change to with this amendment would be $410,000.
I move we table.
Tag it.
Okay, we have a motion to table this in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. So Jim, you'll take a look at that and.
Yes, sir, I'll get with Joe.
Okay, we'll get, get back to that.
Okay.
All right, next to the 2021 General Terms Agreement with Triad and Associates, Angie?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is my annual agreement that I always present to you at the end of the year, and it's for the not-to-exceed amount of $15,000.
I move we approve.
Tag it.
I have a motion to approve the agreement with Triad in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Right next, we have the Sixth Revised Edit Capital Improvement Plan. Brad?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Brad Bookout. I want to yield my time, I think, to James and John. I think maybe they were gonna share some information on this.
This is a, this is the Sixth Amendment amended plan. Commissioner King worked with Matt Ecklerly at Baker Tilly to firm up some of the numbers and reworked some of the numbers with regard to the edit plan. I then moved those numbers into the edit plan itself in the format that we're familiar with, so that it identifies the projects and describes those projects in and of themselves. One, one point to make mention of is the town of Yorktown is not included in the edit plan, because the town of Yorktown and the county have entered into a separate, different agreement, where we are working with the town of Yorktown on joint projects via the TIF program, which is pursuant to the town of Yorktown's agreement, and those TIF agreements have been in place and are working between the county and Yorktown. The plan remains pretty much the same. It grants the other towns some, some funding this year, as well as allows for some economic development money that is needed for projects that Brad is currently working on in his bailiwick.
I understand we put some money in Project 22 for some timber bridges, and I don't know how many, but I know some of them, Angie, I believe you can convert back to culvert, big steel culvert. Do you have any idea how much, how many you might be looking at this next two, three years?
Yeah. How many timber bridges?
We left, I understand.
I'm sorry, as you guys are cutting each other out, what, what about the timber bridges?
I understood that there was some money put in Project 22 for some new timber bridges. We know that they're popping, they're breaking, and I'm just concerned that if we don't look down the road, we need to replace them as we go before they start deteriorating.
Well, I'm excited to hear. I've got a budget for timber bridges in your edit plan. I did not know that. So that's, how much do I get to spend? I do have a bridge I need to replace in the next five years, a timber bridge.
And Sherri, you also have to remember, too, that we work with the county council, and we gave up that penny this year, and we're going to go back and rediscuss that with them next year, which will add more financing to our bridges. So we, we should have extra funding in that also, Sherri, for the timber bridges. But one of the things that you stated was you wanted to look at the timber bridges. That's the reason why Project 22 was put in for economic development and infrastructure. That way, if a bridge came up that we had to rehab, we wouldn't have to go in and continually to change this edit plan. We wouldn't have to do Amendment 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. That's the reason why that was put in there. So if a project came up that we could just use Project 22 to take care of this.
Well, I appreciate that. I just thought maybe we could be a little, let people know that we're gonna be working on some of these bridges as soon as possible before they break. So that's what I was hoping for.
Yeah, well, we'll work with Angie, and we'll also work with our bridge inspector to see what bridges that we need to look at first.
Appreciate it.
I'll, I'll work with you, and I, actually, I was looking at my notes. I have two timber bridges I'd like to replace in the next five years. So I'll get some estimates together and see if we can work it within the budget.
And then in Project 11, the $600,000, we won 22. What's that kind of?
Well, with, with all of the buildings that we have, you know, we have boilers that will be going out, roofs that we have to look at. It's nice to have that money set aside, Sherri, so we, like in the past, where we would have to go looking for the money, or once again, we would have to amend our edit plan to take care of these projects. It's best to have that money in there, because we don't know what's gonna happen in the future with some of our buildings. So that's the reason why that was put in there. Project 11 states building upgrade and maintenance, so that is to upgrade our buildings and also for the maintenance of the building. So I sort of thought that explained itself, but, you know, we need to have money in there to take care of some of these existing buildings that we have.
So you're telling me there just wasn't one certain item that this is going to?
No, there's not one certain, certain item. You know, we also have our Amaresco project that can come out of that, but we need funding in there. If boilers go out, if we have problems with one of the roofs in, within, within the county, you know, these are things that we can use this, these dollars for, Sherri. Once again, I wanted to make sure that we didn't have to go back every month, every two months, every three months, and amend this, this plan. I wanted to make sure money was set aside within this plan to where if something happened, we didn't have to go back and amend it. If, just say on the county building, we need to do a new chiller roof or something on that, we have that money there to where we don't have to go back and look at it. I know we've had to do some upgrades at 911, so that's the reason why this money was put in there. It's not just for one project.
And the public safety number 21, those new cars, per se?
No, actually, we look at this because we use it quite a bit for the COVID that we have to do right now, Sherri. We put out a lot of money, and you, you know this, on the COVID, COVID for public safety and the public health. You know, we have to use this money to purchase items and then get reimbursed afterwards, and the money that gets reimbursed now goes to the general fund, which goes to the county council, which we have to go back to them to get our reimbursement from them. So it's good to have that money in there, because if we have something that comes up, we have money that we can go ahead and purchase the items and then go back to the county council to be reimbursed for those items.
I appreciate them. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Things, I think, looks good.
I move we, I move we adopt Sixth Revised Edit Plans.
I'll second that.
A motion to adopt the revised edit plan in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, next we have the Eagle View Proposal and Agreement. Marta?
This is being presented to you, almost like an introduction. The goal would be to see if we could take final action on it at the next December 21st meeting. We, this is the agreement between the county and the company that provides our aerial photography that is used in our Beacon website, and then also on everyone who uses ArcMap at their, on their desktop. And the previous agreement was a six-year agreement that called for three flights within the six years. And last year was the last flight of that previous agreement. So we're due to make a new agreement, and we could do either a single year, or if we go for the similar six-year agreement that calls for three flights within that six years, we save about $15,000 by doing it that way. And I have not read the agreement. It looked pretty standard and, and very similar to what the previous agreement set forth. And one thing I will say is that I have in place the monies that will cover 80% of the cost for the first two flights, like next year and in '23. And then Kyle works on coordinating with, I don't know, 10 or 12 different agencies to collect and gather monies to pay the 20%, and I don't know, Kyle, you want to throw anything in there?
Yeah, sure. We, we go around to the various county offices that have funds available to, to throw in to help cover these costs, as well as the Muncie Sanitary District, the City of Muncie, Economic Development. City and county redevelopment always help provide some funds to help meet our 20% local match.
Very good. So, I guess, this, I wanted to introduce it so that it didn't fall through the cracks, and the company would like to know, if possible, this year, so that they can set up all of their work schedule for flights in 2021. And typically, they would fly this in the spring of 2021, before the leaves start coming out on the trees, so that you have good, good visuals of the ground, I guess you'd say. The other thing I will mention is that I am also in the process of making sure that we're good in terms of dealing with Eagle View as a sole source provider, and that's what we have done in the past. And I will be sending sort of a memo, if you will, into NDOT just for their concurrence that this is a sole source, since we're using federal dollars to pay for 80% of the cost.
So you want us to wait until next meeting then to approve this?
Yep.
You have a little more work to do?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We table this, Shannon, until our next meeting.
I'll second.
Table this agreement in a second. Roll call, please.
Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thanks, Marta. All right, next we have replacing a generator. Paul Singleton?
Good morning again, Commissioners. What I have presented are two replacement generator and transfer switch quotes. As, as you are aware, we have been having some serious issues with our generator in our transfer switch, which runs this whole building, not only for 911, but for the EOC side, powers out. Generator's at least 10, 10 years old. It's got some major issues and a major oil leak. Um, it's got some major issues and a major oil leak. So those are just quotes to get those two items replaced and get our backup systems in order.
Okay, so Paul, I have the WWW or the WW Williams or seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. And, and that includes everything, correct?
That includes everything.
Okay. You have a quote, you had a quote from another company as well, correct?
McAllister, that should have been sent to you as, as well.
I don't, I didn't, I don't have it. Billy, do you have that handy?
Um, let me look.
Uh, Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, what are the longevity of these newer pieces of equipment, really past ten years in it?
I can't answer that one. That's, uh, would just be a guess on my, my part. But I think if we get ten, ten years or more out of it, um, we're doing good.
You did, is it monthly that it goes, starts up and you crank it up or is it weekly?
Well, it, it's supposed to be weekly, but the computing unit on the generator itself is not functional. Plus, the automatic switchover to switch from AEP power back to the generator and then back is not working. So that has to be done manually right now.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion. We approve.
I was kind of, I was kind of waiting on that McAllister quote to see how much it was.
Yeah, the, the McAllister quote is about eight thousand dollars less.
Eight thousand dollars less than the WW Williams?
Yes. And one company's out of Fort Wayne and then McAllisters is out of Indianapolis and they have offices all over the state.
Coming to your email now.
Billy, could you give me the figure on that McAllister quote, please?
John, I just sent it to you as well. Um, let's see here. Seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars, it looks like, for the net price. Is that correct, Paul?
For McAllister?
McAllister, yep.
Um, I think there's a credit for the trade-in also. I was under the impression that we
Um, so after the trade-in, it would be seventy thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. So it would take five thousand off.
Right. They offered us five thousand trade, whereas WW Williams only offered us a thousand dollars in trade. Even, even without the trade, McAllisters was cheaper than WW Williams. And Bruce Dunn and I have, have both gone over the specs on this and the specs are the same between the two quotes for the size of the generator and the transfer switch and everything that goes with it.
Okay, so um, I entertain a motion to approve the McAllister quote of seventy thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Right, rule call, please.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
So the lead time on acquiring that, once it's ordered, is eleven to twelve weeks.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, the farm ground bids? Who has those?
I've got them.
Okay.
We have three bids. First one is from Chad Spangler. Hundred and sixty dollars an acre. And for all the ground except for the four point seven acres, it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars an acre for a total bid of four thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Second one is, sorry.
Spanglish bid is for the ground out there on, by the new Justice Center.
Well, this says fourteen point four-one acres, eight point seven-one acres, three point one acres, and four point seven acres.
Yes, that's out there at the Justice Center.
Okay. The first three are a hundred and sixty dollars an acre. The last one for the four point seven acres is a hundred and thirty-five dollars an acre.
Thanks.
John Schroyer is the second bid. Unit price is two hundred and thirty-one dollars per acre.
I believe that's for the hundred and thirty-some odd acres out there by the Highway Department. Bonice Jackson.
It says farm ground approximately a hundred and thirty acres.
Okay.
This one is from Wade Wright and John Light. It's for the hundred and thirty acres of farm ground, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars per acre. And those are our three bids.
Did they, um, did Mr. Schroyer and Wade Wright and John Light give some contact information, Mr. Craig Craft?
No.
Okay. All right.
What would be the appropriate procedure here, John?
Well, what we had anticipated doing with farm ground, it's different than other quotes. You're allowed to open, once bids are open, they're not sealed bids, but once the bids are open, then we can go into a, a, um, get a bidding process to see if they want to increase their bids. We would give Mr. Schroyer an opportunity to increase his bid to it, um, over the two hundred and fifty-seven acre being offered by Wade Wright. If they decline, then we would grant, uh, we would make a recommendation to accept the two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, Mr. Retsch and I will conduct a, uh, will contact the, these two bidders uh, and see if they wish to increase their bid and go back and forth and then make a recommendation back to the Commissioners for their twenty, December twenty-first meeting.
So John, do we just need to make a motion, take it under advisement and allow you and Joe to go ahead and do that?
Yes, if you'll just take all three bids under advisement, you can make the award at the December twenty-first meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Hey, we have a motion to take the bids under advisement in a second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Craig Craft, if you could have Denise send those, um, to Joe and I.
Okay.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Resolution Number twenty-twenty dash zero four five. Is Brad doing this one? Who's doing this one?
Do you want to do this one?
Sure. So this is a resolution that will approve a joint inter, uh, interlocal agreement with the Creed Board to, uh, effectively allow the Creed Board to cover some of the costs of some various paving projects around the county. It's pretty simple. Basically, the Creed Board will pay a little over half the costs and the county will cover the other half. And I believe the paving will be for different roads throughout the county. So all this resolution is doing is approving the joint interlocal agreement that allows you guys to enter into that agreement and carry out the projects.
And the State Board of Accounts allows this money to be taken out of the district?
Correct. The, by statute, the Creed Board and the county Commissioners are able to enter into a joint interlocal agreement for economic development projects. And the term economic development projects is very broad and includes just a long list of things that, uh, obviously would cover highway road paving and just various other expenses that may be related to economic development within the county.
Okay. I move we adopt a Resolution Number twenty-twenty dash oh four five.
I'll second it.
A motion to approve the resolution in a second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes. Thanks.
All right, next, uh, under department heads and elected officials. Um, Jamie, you want to give us an update on the COVID situation, please?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, as of this morning, five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five cases, a hundred and eight deaths, and a ten point nine positivity rating. Based on what we've been seeing, I anticipate we'll probably stay in orange again for the upcoming week as well. We're in no better shape really than any of the other counties around us. I'd be happy to entertain any questions and try to provide you guys an answer.
So we did, um, I have been working with Jamie. We've been talking about enforcement, enforcement procedures as far as, um, businesses that are, are, uh, abiding by the mask mandate, signage and the social distancing. Um, those conversations are carrying on at this point. So we, we, we're doing the best we can at this point. We have been having some issues at the county level as far as employees. John, you've been working on a revised employee exposure kind of plan? The CDC made changes to their quarantine period late last week, either Thursday or Friday. Uh, and I've been working on a revisions to the county's protocols for those. I've sent those to Jamie. He and I had a conversation. We've had several conversations. Matter of fact, we had one just before this meeting got started to make some further changes. Uh, I have some, uh, made some changes and I want to get it over to him for his review so that the Commissioners can adopt those protocol changes as part of their administrative procedures. Uh, and so I will get that over to him after this meeting gets done and then get it to the Commissioners for their approval so that can be put into place later today. Very good. And then at that point also, um, we, we've also had Kyle make a, uh, COVID-nineteen protocol flow chart. We will also release that at the same time, um, we release the other protocols as well. So Kyle, it looks real good and you did a good job on that. I appreciate that. And we will, I think, um, once we approve this, Kyle, we ought to post it also to allow other, uh, businesses to, uh, adopt the plan if they choo- choose to, so.
Absolutely. No problem.
Um, we've also, uh, I was on a conference call, uh, with the hospital, uh, Friday. Um, so they are keeping us up to date on the numbers in the hospital. What is it today, Kyle? Have you been sent that information?
Did it come through today?
I think it just now come, yeah, I believe.
Uh, it's eighty-one. Uh, we have eighty-one currently, IU BMH.
Okay. So they are, we are working with the hospital as well, so we'll try to keep, um, keep those lines of communication open. John, let's go to the moving bids. Yes, I, um, we received some bids for moving to the new Justice Center. I got, I received all of those pursuant to the RFP sent out by the consultant. I've taken a look at those. I asked several questions of all the bidders to find out what was included, what was, it wasn't included, whether this was a not-to-exceed bid or not. Uh, we had four companies, Three Rivers Moving, Guardian Relocation, Hogan Mayflower, and Wheaton Moving and Storage. They all provided, um, quotes to us for, for moving services. In my follow-up information, I found that the lowest and most responsive bid was from Three Rivers Moving in the sum of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. One hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. And this is a not-to-exceed quote. Though it could be a little less, but it, it, it can't be anymore. Um, they would work with the employees on packing the stuff, put them in these trays uh, and get them moved from the current facility to the new facility. The move time is estimated to be about three to four weeks.
I'd make a motion. We go with Three Rivers on the moving.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, motion to approve the, uh, quote from Three Rivers Moving out of Fort Wayne in a second. Rule call, please.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, John. Or they, I will coordinate a meeting with them, um, the developers and the department heads to start the process.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other department heads on here that have anything to bring up?
Yes, Shannon, I'd like to give you an update. We went to our new nine-one-one phone system recently. That seems to be up and running, uh, with very minimal problems during the switchover. Um, as part of that, all of the phone lines in the basement of our old backup center have been deep commission. Um, so we're in the process of, uh, moving completely out of the old backup center. There's a little bit of equipment we're going to look at possibly, um, salvaging the desk and some of the, um, office furniture, um, for the, for a potential backup center somewhere in the county building after the moves are completed.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, Shannon, this is Jim.
Yes, Jim.
Give you an update on the county phone system installation. We were supposed to tentatively go live on November twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Uh, that did not happen. We're, uh, in a holding pattern, waiting for AT&amp;T to port our lines over so we can get on the new phone system in the county building, the EMS one and the highway. I have not heard anything today and it's kind of a wait and let AT&amp;T, when they get their ducks in a row, they get everything, uh, set up and give us the day that they're going to port them over. And then that's when we'll go live on these phones here. The other side of this is, is we just talked about the Justice Center move. And if I understood, you're right, that the move could take three to four weeks in timeframe to get all the departments moved?
That's correct.
Okay, um, the one caveat to the phone system is when we're done with these phones and we're ready to look at moving the Justice Center phones. Um, and we've already put in for that porting to be done, but we can put it in a hold if we need to. But, um, once those numbers are ported out of the Justice Center, they go out to the new phone system. So they will not be available to the users in the Justice Center at that point. Uh, the new phones will have, are going to be installed at the new Justice Center. And that's one of the caveats that we've got to deal with on this, on this move.
Okay.
And I've got a call Wednesday with Level Three-Sixty-Five and the departments in the Justice Center to get a game plan put together. What I've heard today, that kind of throws another little curve into it that we've got to plan on how we're going to work around that and how. Uh, what I've heard today, that kind of throws another little, uh, curve into it that we've got to plan on how we're going to work around that and how those departments are planning to move and have phones in their offices in the Justice Center, in the current Justice Center, so.
All right, you'll work on that and let us know.
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner, this is Kyle with the Office of Information. Uh, we, uh, we've been in some early coordination and, uh, conversations with local foundations that are, uh, setting up a program to help with um, education outreach as a vaccine, uh, starts to become available for the public. Um, the details haven't been worked out, but, uh, they are willing to work with the county, the Health Department and our local health organizations to help spread the information once it does become available. Um, in addition, uh, if you're looking for testing sites, um, if you go to our hub at DCEMA dot com, there's a page on there that lists all the available community COVID testing sites and, uh, Open Door is opening a couple new rotating sites, um, around the community so you can get access to the list and a map to find out what is, uh, closest to you at your, uh, your home. So just wanted to make everyone aware that that is a resource that is available.
Very good, Kyle. Thanks for, um, thanks for all your work on that and keeping, keeping us all up to date. We appreciate it. Is there anything else?
So here's the trivia of the day question. What happened seventy-nine years ago?
No idea.
I'm in Pearl Harbor.
Yeah, who said that?
Who do you think?
You got Pearl Harbor.
Yeah.
No, John, John gets.
He gets the gold star on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Our encyclopedia Brown of the county.
You guys received the, uh, weights and measures monthly report, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go down to the, uh, payment of claims of two million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and nine cents. I screwed that up.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the claims, payment of claims and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, uh, John, is there any public comments that you've seen? I've seen some comments from, uh, Cameron Grubbs about the emergency order and, um, commenting that he doesn't think the county is doing enough, uh, on the COVID situation. Uh, and that about the CDC quarantine guidelines. I'll, for those are just comments that, his objection to what the county is doing or not doing. Well, and I, I guess, you know, uh, you guys know we've, we've, uh, um, John, Jamie, um, emergency management folks have all met and we've discussed in the, um, enforcement and public education part of this and, um, everyone, uh, is aware that the state had put out thirty million dollars towards, um, education and enforcement. You know, we, uh, John took a look at the guidelines and, and I, I think, um, it's another one of those situations where um, the state put that money out making, um, painting a, a, a pretty picture counties and, and people to take advantage of that. However, the way the guidelines are set up again, um, we, we, there's, we can't use that money. So I think there was, uh, it was over three hundred thousand dollars allocated towards Delaware County, John, is that right? Yes. And so, um, you know, we, we have to come up with other ways to try to, um, do this, so. Well, there, there is a question. Mr. Grubbs wants to know, are there any further efforts being taken to mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen? Helping the Delaware County Health Department educate the public and enforce requirements. I think I'd leave that to Jamie.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest things that the commissioners and our Board of Health have undertaken is the the blocking of any events over fifty. That has shut down a number of things, um, in our community, a number of events that were set to occur that would have been of, uh, major concern that stood in the way of those. Um, our staff continue to address each and every complaint that we receive. I, I missed any other aspect of that question, John, I'm sorry.
I think you've also undertaken some public education, uh, and some advertisements to educate the public, have you not?
Yeah, that's correct. We received grant funding from the Ball Brothers Foundation, uh, that was also matched by the commissioners to, um, undertake an ad campaign targeting Ball State. Um, Ball Brothers has additionally funded us again for an extension to expand that ad campaign to the general public. Um, that's kind of underway right now. The first phase of that that went out to more general public was a, a postcard mailing that I believe was sent last week. Not sent countywide. There simply isn't enough funding to, to cover that. But we're doing the best we can with what we have to try to get the, the word out on that.
Uh, Jamie, this does bring up a point. Last, our last meeting, these big box stores that do sell liquor, could we not put a little pressure on them to watch the crowds that are coming in and going? I remember when we first started this, there was some, um, some of the companies would have someone outside working with the public, warning them that they needed the so- the mask before they went into the store. And it's, it just seemed like the education has gone, kind of gone downhill. Well, our, um, visitor last month at, or at our meeting claimed that they can pull these liquor license if people aren't following the rules. So wouldn't that be a place we could start educating?
Uh, that's been ongoing for months now. We've addressed every complaint that's been lodged against any of those establishments. Naturally, we don't have staff that we can put out to police and monitor that daily, every day, so we can't see what's happening every moment of every day. But I can tell you, I've been to, uh, Walmart weekly, the North Walmart. I've been to Meyer. I've been to Target, Payless and Fresh Time. I've made, whether it be, uh, a personal stop or an intentional stop to try to size up what's going on. And in each instance, I've seen compliance. Now naturally, that doesn't mean that you won't run into a single individual going down an aisle not wearing a mask. But the, uh, the mandate allows for exceptions to that, so I could go up and question each individual and see why they're not wearing a mask, but
No.
The businesses themselves are complying.
But it seems to me that if we've had repeat, that if you were to send a letter to our, the Excise Department, that they could come and check it out.
And we would do that. On the repeats, we actually are going out and then conducting a visual inspection on each of those. If we were to find evidence of that and be able to document it, we would bring it to their attention.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And, and, uh, again, sure, you said the educations went down. I don't think the education has went down. I think people are tired of it. I, I believe people are just getting tired of it and I, I think businesses are too. However, I will say that I was out a little bit this weekend and, um, that, there was, uh, people were adhering to the mask mandate that I, the places I was, uh, was at. Um, so I think we just need to make sure, um, people continue to, to do that and we keep posting that. I mean, I, I, I think we're doing what we can do at this point.
Jamie, give us the, uh, your, um, place that we can send in complaints in writing your, um.
Yeah, there's a citizen complaint form available through the coronavirus hub that, um, Office of Information Services maintains. Uh, that webpage is most easily accessed through DCEMA dot com. And you can scroll down through that has, that site has a lot of very valuable information, a lot of links, but you can find a Delaware County Health Department. I believe it's titled Citizen Complaint Form.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jamie. Does anyone have anything else? Well, there are some other, a couple of other comments, uh, and I think there's a misunderstanding that the commenters have about the additional funding. The additional funding was released by the state on November twenty-fifth for thirty billion among the whole state. Delaware County was eligible for three hundred and seventy-one thousand. According to a finance authority, that can only be used for reimbursement of public safety, uh, payroll expenses. What Jamie is talking about with regard to funding for, uh, advertisement wouldn't fit within the IFA requirement, but we can submit and will submit, uh, payroll forms from the Health Department and others to try and get some of that funding to help offset some of Jamie's costs. But that would have to go to also be approved by the council to, to do that, but there is some money available to do that. Very good. Anyone have anything else? Any other comments? Uh, entertain a motion for recess.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion to recess. Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.